Right, welcome everybody to our special council meeting of the 26th of August. And as tradition holds it, we will have our welcome to country.
We, the Waila people, welcome you to our country. We are the lawful inhabitants of this peninsula for thousands of generations. We are part of this land on which we stand, part of the waters that flow in and around. We are part of the dreaming stories that are connected. The full awareness of oneness with the land and waters will ensure a future for the children of tomorrow. Ngarangia, wunaguru bangala mirangia, yuradumelbu. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Our attendance record. We have apologies from councillor Knox and councillor Westerman. Councillor Campbell is on her way. Item three, declaration of members' conflict of interest. Does anybody have a conflict of interest to declare?
I will.
And the nature of your conflict councillor.
And culture one of the women's A-grade sort.
Thank you.
Women's football terms, sorry.
Item four, we have three deputations tonight, firstly the Waila Cricket Association, then the Waila Women's Football Association and the South Australian Cricket Association. So we will have those deputations and for the benefit of the gallery, once they're completed, we have another matter in open council from city growth. But the matter at hand to do with our Oval spaces that will be considered afterwards as a confidential item because it does contain confidential information, obviously. So you won't get the results of that tonight, but the outcomes will be advised to all the parties first thing in the morning. I would also ask for the deputations, when you are giving your deputation, if you could also provide just a brief outline of all the endeavours each group has made to try to come up with a solution which will help the deliberation of the council later tonight. So I would invite, as item four point one, the Waila Cricket Association, would you care to come up and do your deputation please?
Thank you for taking the time. I'm John O'Halloran, president of the Waila Cricket Association. Two, that's better, thank you. Yeah, thank you for having us here tonight. I'm John O'Halloran, the president of the Waila Cricket Association, and my colleague Matt Quist, who's on the executive. First and foremost, the Waila Cricket Association would like to thank the council for allowing us to present here tonight, as well as to acknowledge the support the council have given us over many years. Ours is a mutually respectful relationship and we're grateful for this. We'd also like to make it clear that as an association, we fully support all community sporting codes to develop and grow their competitions. We acknowledge that one size doesn't fit all when it comes to sport, but that having multiple thriving codes in regional communities is what makes us want to stay and be a part of that community. Wherever possible, cricket strives to coexist and support other sporting associations and leagues. This was the basis for our decision in 2324 to welcome the Waila Women's Football League to temporarily play at Memorial Oval whilst the change room and facilities at Jubilee Oval were being completed. It is our understanding that council have made a significant investment into the Jubilee Park facility in order to provide a quality multi-use venue available for sports to utilise outside of their seasonal tendencies. Hundreds of years of tradition across the country have dictated that there is a season for cricket and a season for football, and for the most part, working complementary of one another, utilising shared facilities. However, in this instance, the Waila Women's Football League have made the decision to play outside a traditional football season and within a cricket season. Cricket simply is not played outside of cricket season and it certainly does not infringe on football season. Even so, we feel that we have been more than compromising to facilitate the Women's Football League and the non-traditional season they have come up with, despite this is not being ideal for cricket. We would like to make some key points that we feel are pertinent in this manner before council and I'll hand over to Matt Quist to deliver those. Thank you. So we'd like to cover five key areas. So historical context, joint capital funding with the SACA and Sandfull, the importance of cricket to new Australians, cricket's willingness to compromise and the negative impacts to cricket in our community. The Waila Cricket Association has primarily played at Memorial Oval for over 70 years. For much of this time, this was the only turf we could available in the region. Since 2020, thanks to the generosity of both council and the South Australian Cricket Association, we have been able to play on turf wickets both at Memorial and Bennett Ovals, with Memorial Oval still very much being the heartland of cricket in Waila and Bennett Oval widely considered as the home of football. The Waila Cricket Association have actively utilised both facilities over the past three seasons in order to provide value in maintaining both turf wickets across the two ovals for cricket. This has included hosting T20 competition finals, the 2022 Super League final and the 2023/24 A-grade final at Bennett Oval. This last final mainly due to the condition of Memorial Oval after nine months of football being played on the site up until December 2023. Enough emphasis cannot be made, cannot be placed on the detrimental effects of football to this highly curated turf wicket during cricket season. The joint capital funding, so the South Australian Cricket Association in conjunction with the South Australian National Football League and state government have contributed in excess of $1 million in capital funding for the Bennett Oval Memorial Oval redevelopment project. This joint funding venture included the proviso that a new turf wicket be installed for future development of cricket in the region. To further aid this development, SACA provided the complimentary services of world-class turf consultant Trent Kelly to train and advise council staff on turf management at council venues. Thanks to this investment, Waila now has two turf wickets which are both, which are the best within the Spencer Gulf. For over five years, the Waila Cricket Association, along with the Port Augusta Cricket Association, have been working towards a joint competition to ensure a long-term strength of cricket within the Spencer Gulf region. This has just been agreed to in the last month with a full 14-round home and away season with eight clubs planned to compete in the upcoming season. The importance of cricket to new Australians. Rural cities such as Waila and Port Augusta have long been a destination for new Australians, many of South Asian heritage. Our association recognises the invaluable role that cricket plays in helping new Australians to feel part of our local community. Local soccer and cricket have been integral to new families feeling a sense of belonging within this community. Indeed, both the Waila Cricket Association and Port Augusta Cricket Association featured clubs participating in the A-grade Super League, one in particular consisting entirely of proud new Australians who have requested to play their home games as day-night fixtures, utilising both Memorial and Bennett Ovals. Available data to support this, local cricket has seen an increase in junior participants with South Asian heritage from 8% two years ago to 14% of total participants this just last season and 15% from 8% of senior participants over the last year. Cricket's willing to compromise in this situation. The Waila Cricket Association have every desire to see women's football prosper within our community. This is why we have proposed several solutions and compromises to share facilities after having met with council and the Waila Women's Football League on Wednesday the 31st of July. The proposed that the Waila Football, uh, Women's Waila Football League use Memorial Oval for the first two rounds, followed by Jubilee Park for round two to 10 fixtures, with the potential to return to Memorial Oval for the finals post-November 30th, this initial compromise was not accepted by football. Following last week's council meeting, the Waila Cricket Association offered football a further compromise, a structured programme whereby cricket and football would share facilities across Memorial and Bennett, which was a generous proposition, one with the, one would have been detrimental to both cricket and the turf wickets, so carefully curated by the council. These compromises by cricket were collectively supported by council. Women's football coordinator Scott Levington, president of the Waila Football League Keith Sitchler, still was not supported by football clubs. We can see no reason why this is the case. If this refusal to compromise lies in the size of the ovals, we can provide measurements to show the size differences to be minimal and no serious consequence to the game of football. And just finally, the negative impacts to cricket in our community. Ultimately, sharing the facilities with football during cricket season will negatively impact the fixture of our games. Notwithstanding, we have discussed a shared use solution with our partners and governing bodies and believe we can manage this compromise. However, not having access to Memorial Oval for this period of October through December will severely compromise the development of cricket in our region, both this season and in the long term. We therefore implore the elected members here tonight to vote on this matter in a way that protects the sport of cricket and the vital role it plays within our local community. There any questions from the elected members? Matt Nagel and David Arenson for you.
Sorry, just so that I've got it clear in my head, what was the latest offer of compromise?
The latest offer of compromise was to have a shared fixture where Memorial Oval will be used for the first two rounds and then Bennett Oval would be available for the final round and the finals for the Women's Football League. So the compromise, both codes would have five weeks at the Premier Ovals. So cricket would have access to both those ovals for five weeks and then women's football would have access to a Premier Oval for five weeks out of their competition. Any other questions? Thanks.
Waila Women's Football Association, Scott.
Ah, right. Firstly, I'd like to thank the presentation from the Waila Cricket Association. Obviously, it is difficult circumstances to be in conflict with them. I'm actually a member of the executive of the South Waila Cricket Club. So yeah, I am a little bit conflicted in my current position, but hence I will go forward. Firstly, I'll just go through the presentation, the presentation and put forward a bit of a background to go over what was discussed on our last meeting on Monday, but also just to, you know, reiterate some of our points. To move on to the next slide. So, um, yeah, so last year, the Waila Football League launched the Waila Women's Football Competition, comprised of five teams, four teams from Waila and one team, a combined team from Port Augusta. It was a great success, 157 registered female players, an estimated average attendance between 300 to 350 attendees per match. The success of the competition format has attracted the attention of the SNFL and AFL with consideration being given to use the Waila competition format as a blueprint for starting other regional women's football competitions. Timing was critical in terms of when the competition was played. It was based around avoiding clashes with other female sports like netball, basketball and hockey, but mainly netball. Another key element of the competition's success was having access to Memorial Oval, a venue with all the facilities to host women's matches. On the 19th of July, the Waila City Council informed the Waila Football League that it was unsuccessful in its application to schedule matches on Memorial Oval for the 2024 Waila Women's Football Competition. The Waila Football League current contract for the use of Memorial Oval expires on the 30th of September 2024. Our request to you, the elected members, is to vote to extend Memorial Oval, the use of Memorial Oval to the Waila Women's Football Competition from the 1st of October to the 30th of September 2024. Our preferred venue, Memorial Oval remains the Waila Football League's preferred venue for the 2024 Waila Women's Competition. Memorial Oval's size and dimensions are more suited to the women's football. Memorial Oval is a family-friendly venue which has all the facilities in place, ready to use to host women's football matches, scoreboard, canteen, bar, scorekeeper's box, et cetera. Located in built-up area allows families, individuals and families to walk to the venue. There's also access to public transport. The oval is gated, so the Waila Football League is able to raise revenue by charging entry fee. The Waila Football League is also able to raise revenue through the sale of food and drink from the Waila Football League-run canteen and bar. This revenue goes towards covering the cost of running the women's competition and reaching the costs to female players to participate in the competition. The Waila Football League has paid and volunteer staff available to manage and work at this venue. The playing surface at Memorial is a far better playing surface than Jubilee Oval, making it a safer venue for our female players who are more prone to injuries than men. Memorial Oval has undercover areas to view matches in the event of inclement weather, has adequate seating and grass areas to view matches, has two elevated grandstands to give spectators a better view of matches and most importantly, has the lighting to the standard to host community football night matches. Non-playing areas of the oval are also well lit during night matches, making it safer for individuals and families to view night matches. I'll just bring up this, um, this is the profit sharing agreement that council currently has with the Waila Football League. The Waila Football League contract to use Bennett and Memorial Oval has a revenue sharing agreement which benefits the Waila City Council financially. By allowing Memorial Oval to use for women's football, the Waila City Council will further profit financially. The Waila Football League pay council a fixed fee of $30,000 for the use of Memorial and Bennett Ovals each year. Each dollar of profit earned above $30,000, 70 cents is earmarked to be paid to council. The additional revenue not only assists council in maintaining Memorial Oval and Bennett Oval, but also other sports, sporting associations in Waila. Here's a quick breakdown of our financials for the Waila Football League's competition from last year. Council benefitted from revenue raised from the Waila Football League's competition. The women's competition was a key component of the Waila Football League in being able to meet our commitments to council in 2023. The Waila Women's Competition alone had an income of just under $30,000 and expenses of $16,628 with a net profit of $13,251. As a league, overall, our total income was $337,000 with expenses of $329,500, an overall profit of $8,331, which includes the women's competition's income and the expense and council lease payment of $30,000. Our position on Jubilee. As Matt said and John said, um, I think the day after the meeting, I reached out to the Waila Cricket Association to see if we could come to an agreement because obviously I'd rather be, have an agreement done than sitting here before you. So there have been ongoing negotiations with the Waila Cricket Association. However, the Waila Football League Women's Committee weren't willing to compromise on player and spectator safety, concerns in playing matches at Jubilee Oval. Results of the lighting and order of Jubilee were that it only had a lux capacity of 40 or 45 lux, well below the required 100 lux recommended for all community football matches. Given the weather, um, the time in which the competition will be played, we're unable, unprepared to schedule any daytime matches during November. Lighting around Jubilee Oval was also raised as a real concern in terms of safety for the large number of spectators anticipated to attend matches. The eastern side of the oval being unfenced and surrounded by scrublands was also raised as a concern for families of young children running around and getting lost at night time. Some of our female players are young mothers, some of them single mothers, that bring their children to matches. They didn't, they don't feel confident in leaving their children unattended at Jubilee Oval whilst playing as they do at Memorial Oval, which is fenced and well lit. The lack of purpose-built facilities, scoreboard, shelter, seating, canteen, bar and the ability of gating the venue remain unresolved issues for the use of Jubilee Oval. Here's a quick summary of our competition, starting on Friday the 13th of September and completing with the grand final at Memorial Oval on the 30th of November. Yep. I've quickly just gone over the, um, the membership of the Waila Football League Committee, which is Matt and myself. Some people think I'm representing South Waila, but I'm actually representing the Waila Football League and we have representatives from all the clubs involved in the competition, plus a representative from Repena Football Club who is involved in our junior competition which finished on the weekend in Port Augusta. In finishing. The Waila Football League Women's Competition isn't just hosting football matches, it's hosting a 12-week intercity community event attracting large numbers of players and spectators from both Waila and Port Augusta. The inaugural Waila Women's Football Grand Final last year was attended by well in excess of 1,500 spectators. The audience was comprised of many young families, young girls running around at quarter-time and half-time breaks, kicking footballs and generally having a good time. The AFLW is one of the fastest-growing sports in Australia. The Waila Women's Football Competition now offers Waila, Port Augusta and female football players from the region a genuine career pathway to professional career as an AFLW player. The success of the Waila Football League Women's Competition hasn't gone unnoticed with the SANFL Community Football awarding the Waila Football League the rights to host the Northern Zone Women's Football Carnival in 2025. This will bring women's teams from Broken Hill, York Peninsula, Port Augusta, Port Perry to Waila. It will be scheduled in early April. Our initial season was an overall success, overwhelming success. However, the initial success is not guaranteed of future success. The Waila Women's Football Competition is still in its infancy and like a young child, needs to be sheltered and protected by its parents to grow and become strong. Having access to Memorial was a key element of the competition's success in 2023. Access to a football oval with extension on a grass surface, lighting to the required standard for community football matches, seating, sheltered areas, elevated seating, secure area able to be gated, canteen and bar facilities and change rooms, a family-friendly environment and public amenities, all of which are paramount to its continued success. Please consider our request to grant access to Memorial to the Waila Football League Women's Football Competition for the entirety of the 2024 season. Help cement this competition as a permanent fixture in the Waila and Port Augusta sporting calendars. And? Questions?
Thank you, Scott. Yes, any member has any questions? Oh, you've said it well then, Scott. No questions?
No questions? Thank you.
You've said it well. Thank you for your presentation.
Theerside Cricket Association.
Thank you, your worship. Can everyone hear me?
No one from Theerside Cricket Association as well? Oh, sorry.
Yep.
Oh, apologies. Over to you.
You're on mute.
Not now. Yeah, try again, Jasmine.
Yep, have we got sound?
Yeah, we'll just adjust our volume this end. Try again.
Excellent. How about now?
Yes, that's better if you can just speak up loudly.
Yep, I'll try my best. Evening elected members. Thank you so much for having us at such late notice. We'll try to be as brief as possible so as to leave you to your deliberations and hopefully you'll... As the peak body for cricket in South Australia, the South Australian Cricket Association is responsible for managing, promoting and developing the game of cricket in South Australia. And as such, we recognise the importance of creating inclusive environments that support communities to participate in all sports at all levels. This is why we enjoy fantastic working relationships with sporting codes from across the spectrum, sharing facilities and resources wherever possible. Elected members, Memorial Oval has been the home and number one venue for cricket in Waila for 70 years. Both SACA and the Waila Cricket Association have significant interest in maintaining both Memorial Oval and Bennett Oval as strategic venues for cricket, both now and well into the future, ensuring the much-loved game of cricket is played in the Waila community for generations to come. Indeed, in Cricket Australia's recent draft national infrastructure strategy, Waila, sorry, Waila City Council was named as one of only two regional South Australian priority LGAs for the purpose of both growing the game of cricket in line with projected population growth as well as targeted investment in cricket infrastructure. In 2018, through carrying out extensive consultation across South Australia for the purposes of developing SACA's South Australian Cricket Infrastructure Strategy, we were able to identify two key priorities from speaking with Waila City Council and the local cricketing community. First was floodlighting of key cricket venues to a community cricket standard in order to enable night training and matches. The second was to work with council in the redevelopment of Bennett Oval to provide an additional venue for cricket as well as playing surface improvements at Memorial Oval. Thanks to the excellent relationship we've enjoyed with council, along with significant investment from council, SACA and the state government, both of these priorities have come to fruition with the local community benefiting from such important partnership. SACA and Cricket Australia's significant investment into cricket facilities in Waila between 2018 to 2022, through both the Australian Cricket Infrastructure Fund and through SACA contributing $1 million across three years into the state government's Football Cricket and Netball Fund, has assisted in funding extensive improvements to both Bennett Oval and Jubilee Park Reserve. Additionally, there has been significant in-kind investment in the turf wickets and grounds of both ovals with SACA's grounds manager mentoring council horticultural staff and checking in on a regular basis to ensure turf conditions on cricket pitches and outfield's remain in quality condition. I point out this level of investment to highlight the positive working relationship cricket has had with council over many years and the commitment the South Australian Cricket Association has shown to the Waila community. Another point I wanted to make is that we're so very proud of the way that cricket at Memorial Oval exemplifies our commitment to creating inclusive environments for culturally diverse communities in all areas and levels of the game. Cricket Australia's multicultural action plan recognises that multicultural inclusion is integral to Australian cricket and the plan therefore outlines initiatives to enhance engagement and inclusion to people of all cultural backgrounds. The Waila Cricket Association has well and truly embraced this ethos, evident by the number of new Australian participants in the local competition as well as the recent inclusion of teams made up entirely of new Australians with fixtures structured around shift work and other commitments. In regard to the matter before you tonight, elected members, as a sports association, we could not be more pleased with the growth of female football participation over the past few years. Cricket too is experiencing unprecedented female participation and our community cricket strategy moving forward places a huge emphasis on female participation, particularly in regional growth areas such as Waila. Cricket Australia's Women and Girls Action Plan outlines a commitment to accelerated growth in female participation and we intend to grow women and girls cricket in the Waila region over upcoming seasons. This will require an increase in the use of... This will require an increase in the use of our turf wickets. We are extremely pleased to see the Waila Cricket Association offering compromises to ensure the long-term sustainability of women's football in Waila. However, cricket simply cannot afford to do this to such an extent that it becomes detrimental to our code. Elected members, during my time with cricket, I've come to know turf wickets as temperamental things, almost like small children requiring plenty of love, care and attention and very easily worn out and tired. This is why turf wickets work exceptionally well on shared-use ovals where they are well cared for and not overused during cricket season. And whilst we would love to have sport played on turf ovals seven days a week, fifty-two weeks of the year, the reality is that turf wickets simply cannot withstand overuse during the summer months. The damage to them would be detrimental to the quality of the game being played there. This is why, on behalf of South Australian Cricket, I respectfully ask you to make the decision that allows cricket to remain at Memorial Oval with priority use for the entirety of the traditional cricket season. SACAA hopes to see the exceptional relationship between ourselves, the Waila Cricket Association and council to continue. We hope to see cricket continue to grow from strength to strength in the Waila community, and we hope to see the incredible diversity of cricket participants in the region continue to flourish. Thank you for your time, elected members.
Thank you very much, Jasmine, if you're still there. Does anybody have a question? No, you've done well. No questions at this end, but thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Cheers. As I mentioned earlier to the gallery, we will be addressing this now later in the evening under confidential, so we are now moving on to another matter as part of our agenda. Just wait for councillor Ings to return. But do sincerely again thank all three groups for their presentations. Right, Ivan Five reports, council offices, five point one, city growth. Yeah. Five point one point one, the contract to procurement for the preparation of Growing Regions Programme Round Two, application and business case. Shall refer to the acting CEO.
And thank you through the mayor. I'll actually refer to the director of city growth.
I'd like to refer to a probe. No, um, uh, tell me. You get me started. As, as you all know, I'll just make this brief. Um, council administration had a really, um, red-hot go at putting a Growing Regions grant application together for the Fourshore Waila Beach Surf and Play Plaza. We were unsuccessful. We made it through the first round of expression of interests and, and then, um, failed at the next hurdle, of which we've got feedback. Um, the Growing Regions Fund has now fundamentally altered, including a complete overhaul of its guidelines, and is back to being a, um, one bid, uh, grant round. So the expression of interest and the second hurdle's all been removed. This is actually the second round of funding of Growing Regions, and there's only two. Um, so I'm recommending in this report that we utilise the services of consultants to put the application together, including, um, the business case, um, that, uh, as we understand it, was part of the stumbling block for the previous application. Um, so other than that, I'll take the report as read.
Thank you, Jade. Before I call further any motions, has anybody got any questions or comments? Councillor Simpson.
Who's, who's the consultant you're thinking about?
Um, we recommend section fifty-one, the same team working on the regional precincts partnership, just for the body of work that they've already undertaken.
Any other comments or questions? Well, certainly after his presentation, he could sell ice blocks to make. I think it shows the difference between somebody that knows nothing that we couldn't do, but how you have to think of not us, but what the government wants to achieve, a big eye-opener. All right, if there's no further questions or comments, Deputy Mayor Pon.
Deputy.
You're moving the recommendation.
Absolutely.
Seconded councillor Top. In that case, I'll put the motion. Those in favour? Against? Carried? Thank you. Councillor Top?
Oh.
Oh, that's all right. Do we wish? Do we wish to take that break now or going to, do you want your supper now or later? Keep going?
Keep going on this side.
Right. In that case, would somebody care to move that we're going to confidence, please? Uh, move Deputy Mayor Pon, seconded councillor Clopica. I'll put the motion. Those in favour? Against? Carried? Thank you very much, and with the time being seven twenty-five, I will declare our special meeting closed.